January 22nd, council may be called over. Would you please stand to the flag of allegiance and move outside.
With flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the January 18th.
Mayor make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 8th. We begin as written.
It has been moved in seconds to approve the January 8th minutes with the clerk please call over.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams, K. R.?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be statements of the bill's paid in the amount of $310,129.38.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to pay the amount of bill of $310,129.38.
Second. It has been moved in seconds to approve the statement of the bill's paid with the clerk please call over.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
K. R.?
Yes.
Yes.
Before we move into the next item, which is comments from the public, I'm going to read a proclamation naming January 21st to 27th as School Choice Week in Edwardsville. Whereas all children in the city of Edwardsville should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas the city of Edwardsville recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students to be successful adults, and whereas equal quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the city of Edwardsville, and whereas the city of Edwardsville is home to a multiple multitude of high-quality schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home, and whereas educational variety not only helps the diversity of our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our communities, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, and schools and organizations to raise awareness of the need protected educational options. Now therefore, I John McTaggart, Mayor of the city of Edwardsville, do hereby proclaim January 21st through January 27th, 2017. Should that be 17 or 18?
18.
Okay. Well, as School Choice Week in the city of Edwardsville. Okay. All right. Now is the opportunity to make any requests or comments. There being none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
Senator Mayor.
I should say, before we move on, we might want to recognize our scout in the audience tonight.
Oh, that's right, they're gonna do that.
I know he's here.
Michael, I didn't get your last name.
Bearagree.
Bearagree.
Bear.
Bearagree.
Bearagree, okay. He was fathered on some of his...
No badges.
Badges, I should, I just couldn't get it out. On some of the badges. Michael, welcome.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to be here.
Okay. This next item is the consider Mayor McTaggart's appointments and reappointments of cities various boards and commissions. And we have the new appointee for the planning commission, Mr. Robert Neff, in the audience for to be here. Or if you want to stand up to be recognized. Thank you for showing us. Neffen, I'm sorry.
I've been called worse.
Yeah, sure.
So Mayor, just I would just note that we have both reappointments, which are the highlighted names.
Yeah, the ones in there are reappointments, yes.
And then the one new appointment, the fill-in vacancy on the planning commission.
This be one motion?
Yes.
To accept. I would like to move that we accept the mayor's appointments and reappointments to the various boards and commissions.
Second. It has been moved in second to approve the appointments of the mayors and reappointments for various boards and commissions. Would the clerk please call over.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
K. R.?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item will be consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a cooperative services agreement with the Institute for Building Technology and Safety, IBTS, Building Department Services.
Uh, Mayor, members of the city council, this item is a contract with IBTS for our building services. Primarily, they provide our building inspections and services. We have been with them since, I believe, 2013. Just a brief history, we originally, actually, I met people from IBTS at an ICA conference in the Phoenix area. At the time, we didn't really have a building official. We had an individual that did building inspections for us. Concerns always, again, talking about liabilities earlier, to make sure we have the right people with the right training, the right certifications there. And we had an individual who was probably retiring in early near future, and so we're looking, well, how do we address this? We don't necessarily have enough work that you have a building inspector official here every single day. We looked at options of going with other cities. The problem is, most of the other cities running the same problems we have, either they didn't have anybody, or they had one person. Of course, when they were gone on vacation or sick or whatever, they were looking for backup and help. And so I was already kind of in this mode of what do we do here to find some help. At that point, we had several large structures coming on to the roles. And in the past, we'd used engineers to do that. And as you might expect, it was very, very expensive to have an engineering firm doing building inspections. And certainly, the people building the buildings we faced for knew that they were, that was very expensive. So we were able to bring IBTS in originally just with the city. But as I said, there was a number of other communities that ran the same boat as we were. And so we kind of got together and said, well, could this work in more than one place? We brought in the Mid-America Regional Council, which, as their name implies, is kind of a regional council and a cooperative body. And so through the Mid-America Regional Council, we ultimately entered into a master agreement. So each city that wants to use one or more of the services enters into an agreement, which is what we have tonight. And then we can select what services that we want to use from that at any particular time. So right now, we use it for our building inspections. But if we wanted to use them for, say, unsafe standard buildings, and we wanted to kind of turn that over to them and let them run with one or two of those buildings, there's a fee scheduler in there, it's already part of the agreement, we don't have to go back out and look for other people. So they provide the staff and they provide the services. Our role is that we take a permit, we process it, so to speak, send it to them, they take care of all the plan review, all the inspections. When the project's done, they say it's ready for release or certificate of completion, and then we issue that. They get paid fees, basically what's collected, they get paid with the exception of permit fee, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But we would recommend authorizing this agreement with IBTS for an additional two-year period. It does have the ability to figure party decides they need to be out of this, so at some point, we say, you know, we want to bring this in-house and have a full-time building inspector. We could do that, but I will tell you that they work for cities that have multiple building inspectors as well, because they have shortages or more work or less work, and so it has worked very well for us. We do have Mark Manville, who is their chief building official with the company. He primarily does the inspections here in Edwardsville for us. They've gotten so busy, they've had to hire additional people, which is good for the business, but Mark's been just almost like an asset, basically part of our staff. I know he and Jessica work hand in hand a lot, as well as with they not become known as. So it would be our recommendation to approve the cooperative services agreement with the IBTS through the Mid-America Regional Council.
Make a motion to approve the city manager to enter a cooperative service agreement with IBTS or Institute for Building Technology and Safety or Building Department Services. Does it need to be added in there for the additional two years?
Uh, no, it's in the act of the agreement.
Consumer standpoint. It has been moved in second to authorize the city manager to enter into a cooperative services agreement with Institute of Building Technology and Safety, IBTS, for Building Department Services. Would the clerk please call over.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
K. R.?
Yes.
Yes.
Second item.
Mayor, the next item, item number six, that goes along with this is the adoption of an ordinance, ordinance number 990, that actually sets our building fees. There's really no changes to this. What did change, the way the contract was in the past, we adopted a fee that had a permit fee, which is the part the city keeps, a plan review fee, and then an inspection fee. But under the contract, because every city sets their own permit fees differently, so under the contract, it sets the plan review fee and the inspection fee. The permit fee is what we collect and keep for the processing and handling. We're not recommending any changes to those. What looks different is that we split it out in how we present it. So of course, it's built into the table now, it's still part of the ordinance, we're just showing you how that works out. So there's really no changes in what we're charging for the permit fee, just slightly different.
They're the same version of the same.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Did you hear your answer?
Yeah, they're gross numbers with the same.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 990 amending Appendix A fee schedule article A 3.00 subsection B residential and commercial building services. Second. Good. Margaret? Yes. Been a motion in second to approve the ordinance number 990 amending Appendix A fee schedule article A 3.000 B residential and commercial building services. Would the clerk please call over.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
K. R.?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, we consider acquisition of HD body worn cameras and docking station for police department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor, council. This item was originally discussed during the budget process. We're asking to go ahead and expend $11,325 of this budget for these particular items. And essentially, because of the amount, we had come before council before we did expend these funds. You have the background information before you, again, we've talked about it on a couple of occasions, but essentially, we are assigning one body camera to every officer. In addition to that, we need the accompanying docking station so that the automated process will work, so that we can dock them into the docking station and that they automatically load to the server. So I'll stand for any questions.
Who does the, how does the motion need to be read?
It just would be approve the acquisition of...
Of the city manager, just the...
Yeah, I can, I mean, yeah. Anytime it's over $10,000, for me against the council, I generally sign off on when those to the purchasing.
Yeah, acquisition.
So just authorize the...
Make a motion to approve the acquisition of HD body worn cameras and docking stations for the police department in the amount of $11,325. Second. It has been moved in second to approve the acquisition of HD body worn cameras and docking station for the police department in the $11,325. Would the clerk please call over?
I have a question.
But go ahead.
For clarification, $11,325 was in the budget?
Yes. For the question, would the clerk please call over? Go ahead.
Um, of the officers, is this going to be every single officer wearing a camera, or is this just patrol?
Uh, there will be a camera for all of the officers who are assigned to patrol and are detective units. For example, if they go out of the office, they can have a camera as well, because we do have some on staff, they're not as advanced as these particular ones, but the ones we're using now, we can keep in reserve and recycle them and distribute them to those detectives as well. They can also use them in-house if they need to, and if we have an interview in an office because of overflow, they will have that that they could use in an office interview as well, so, yeah.
So everyone dealing with the public will have that camera?
Everybody assigned to patrol and detectives. So we have administrative staff that more likely is not going to have a video camera, but yes.
Any more questions? Not to the clerk please call over.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
K. R.?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item will be consider resolution 2018 dash 03, authorizing Edwardsville Fire Department to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the area fire agencies to submit a cooperative grant through the regional AFG program for the purchase of personal protective equipment.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, we're in line to propose the adoption of resolution 2018 dash 03, which is for the fire department to enter into a regional grant for the purchase of self-potented apparatus, breathing apparatus for grown and active structure fire. And to give you a little bit of a background and a history of AFG granting, resulted from a 9/11 attacks in 2001, which was a grant fund established for fire departments across the United States. Some council members have been here since I've been selected twice, and I've been chief here to develop and peer review. We've always attempted to put in for equipment. Now however, it's not just any broad spectrum of equipment that you can apply for, it is prioritized based off of general funding. For 2017's grant funding, $337 million was allotted, well, grant funded, in the fire departments of the United States. That has broke down into about 80% that's covered from all volunteer and metro fire departments, and 20% that's about left for the department such as Edwardsville, which is a combination of volunteer career agencies. As long as they have, we've looked at the fact that our air packs are starting to reach the maximum end of their life within the next 24 months, we have started replacing out of the SBA units. Staff have decided that we're going to try to apply for an AFG grant for the air packs this year due to that, because the cost of the units now are about almost $7,000. We sat down and talked to the chief of Bonner Springs, who has got the same air packs that we currently have, has got the same expiration window, decided we're going to start the grant process for a regional grants. It has since gone on to 10 agencies across three counties, including Johnson County Med Act and several departments in Leavenworth County, to go with the grant. The memorandum of understanding that is in front of you today is a contract between us and the nine other agencies for Edwardsville to act as the lead agency for the entire grant process. On top of writing and constructing the grant and submitting the grant, because of the way the AFG rules and the FEMA that has established the rules for purchase, and a grant awardee can only be one agency. So we sat down and approached the regional partners. Somehow, it was determined that I thought of doing the grant, so I was wanting to write the grant, and we are now here that Edwardsville is going to sponsor the grant. With this comes some responsibilities that MOU outlines and identifies. One is it allows us to act as the liaison for the other 10 agencies to establish the bid specifications, follow Edwardsville's purchasing requirements, and also follow the AFG FEMA standards for the grant funding, on how it is distributed, awarded, and how purchases are done. After that, we have to set there if worth the grant and go into a five-year record-keeping process and provide follow-ups. That is still done by the same lead agency, which would be the Edwardsville, city of Edwardsville and Edwardsville Fire Department. This MOU also identifies those partners will provide us the information that we would need. It also allows us, on behalf of those other nine agencies, to write out the matching 10% grant funds and bill them for their matching shares. Now, when you're sitting there talking about a grant of this magnitude off of the 2017 prices, we're roughly estimating right now that we're about $1.79 million of the total grant. And to give you an idea of what our share looks like for 18 units, is going to be about $179,000. Our matching to the city for ourselves would be $17,000. Considering as the price of three units by themselves, we're looking at the potential that regional grants provide, if art some of the funding being done with the federal government, a better chance for the awarding to it, but it also does create some logistical nightmares that we have to have some of this paperwork going forward. With this, the grant window closes on February the 2nd. The MOU has been agreed to by all the other agencies and are now sitting in parts of their legal review process. The memorandum will be signed by the mayor, it is the only effective if worth of grants to be executed, and that's why there is some terminology there that goes it is a five-year program. But technically, upfront, the city is responsible for 10% of whatever the overall grant award is. Zach has provided some rough numbers in the memorandum that is attached to this, however, that number, and I want to advise strongly, is going to change because 2018 pricing is coming around the corner here, probably about March.
It'll go down.
An air pack that I bought six, eight years ago was $3,000 or $4,000. With the technology up next now, we're running close to $7,800 apiece. This is saving the city in the long run of about $160,000 awarded, saving everybody else across the region a lot of money, increases our opportunities, but puts a lot more work on, Mr. Downs, the finance director, Mr. Webb, myself, and Mr. Daniels, the acting city clerk, to make sure we have everything lined up. What we're looking for tonight is not authorize us to do any purchasing or anything else, it's just simply to allow the mayor to sign in on behalf of the city of Edwardsville to these other 10 agencies. So if we are worth the grant funding, I can submit MOU to FEMA within a time of matter to share requests, and then we will be back in front of the council for all purchases, because according to the grant, we still have to follow the entire city's purchasing process. So if there's any questions, I'll take them this time.
I'd say we know that the chief and I have had a number of conversations, obviously, this was, you know, I look at it, it's like, ooh, that's a lot of money, what's our, you know, kind of what's our risk? It had, this particular pipe and bring it was also done fairly recently in Johnson County for their agencies, and it was awarded, as I understand. So we're kind of using that template, so they've gone through review, obviously, our legal and the other legals are looking at it. But in reality, our risk is what our risk would have been if we went out there and submitted our own grant application at roughly $17,500. I think it's actually nice that we're being asked to take the lead in this, and most of these departments are smaller volunteer departments. I was surprised when Med Act tagged on, I would have thought that they would have gone with Johnson County, but apparently, they didn't get asked, but to be a participant or got overlooked or whatever happened. But I mean, I think having the agencies that we have in here in a broader range will certainly give us a higher probability of success at the grant thing. Obviously, the chief has served a number of times on peer review of grant applications, so he's very knowledgeable what they're looking for, and I trust that he, you know, and brought that there better than us. So I think it is an excellent opportunity for us to be the lead. Yeah, it does create some paperwork that quite honestly goes to that federal paperwork at the same, whether you spend $1 or a million dollars, you know, here, fill out 25 pieces of paperwork, no matter what. So I, we don't see it to create any significant burden upon our staff that we would probably have in the eye of the sword.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt resolution 2018-03, authorizing Edwardsville Fire Department to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the area fire agencies regarding a cooperative AFG grant for the purchase of personal protective equipment.
Second. It has been moved in second to adopt resolution 2018-03, authorizing the city of Edwardsville Fire Department to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the area fire agencies to submit a cooperative grant to this regional AFG program for the purchase of personal protective equipment. Questions, would the clerk please call over?
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
K. R.?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
What is the anticipated, so once it's submitted, what do we expect timing here something?
Part of that is still open debate for this, was this 2017 grants that got delayed and it finally got approved before they expired at the end of the year, and now, you know, with the occurrences Friday. The grant window closes February the 2nd, they have to be submitted by then. By the 3rd or 4th of March is the initial review. We're hoping to take this to the review panels by mid-April, depending upon how far the review panels get. Last year's example, we had five days, 37,000 grant applications, were still 8,000 grant applications never got reviewed. But because this is a 17 grant funding, from my understanding, my contacts, they have to have this closed out by October, almost the new fiscal year of the federal government. So hopefully, notification will be mid-April, early May. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Maybe they can have it done in the next two weeks, at the end, before the next long-range budget of the federal government. So it says council work session, and we were thinking that, and we thought that the development team was going to be here, so we tried to switch this around. And I may have misspelled the word litter in here, I kept going between two Ts and one T, I know I may have misspelled that, so if I did, yeah, well, you know, I kept...
You could just go trash. You could have made these good, yourself, just trash.
Yeah, trash.
You know, there you go. Then you recover one. Last thing was a lease.
So I'm not necessarily coming tonight with any specific recommendations, but since our last meeting, we as staff have been looking at kind of where we're at, what the problems are, and some solutions that we think are viable, probably a combination of those. So can I have this? Can I have it still appear? Okay, sorry. So, and I'm going to say right off the bat, none of these pictures are local, because I didn't, I didn't want to, you know, put anybody on the spot, but this is the problem, trash. And predominantly, I think, you know, it's been along the interstate highway. I mean, we certainly have in town, but I think what we see is a lot of that that's coming off the interstate highway and how we deal with it, which creates obviously some unique scenarios when you're dealing with an interstate highway and other jurisdictions, et cetera. But litter's the problem. I think it's safe to say that the primary source of that litter, especially along our highways, is garbage trucks. They, you know, we have large landfill right across the river, pretty much anybody that's providing services in this region, especially in the Kansas side, is going to what's known as the Deffin, Deffin Ball of Johnson County landfill, whether they're coming from the north or the south. You know, they're going here, the other nearest landfill in Kansas is basically owned by the Warren Sirion, I think, so we, you know, we see a lot of trash trucks. We also have the recycling center, basically owned off of around K32 and 88th Street. So we do have a lot of this kind of trash, you know, plus what you just typically have from highways, and we have a lot of heavy, you know, truck traffic that gets into the tires, et cetera. So I think we know what problems are, and so the question is, you know, what can we do to try to address those? So first of all, what's happening today? As you remember, Waste Management, which at the time was Deffin Ball, made a commitment to the council, though it was non-binding, very clear, non-binding, that they would quote, "monitor and collect litter along I-435." I think the comments been made, and I think it's fair, you know, they do a pretty good job, probably between Holiday Drive and the river, pretty good around Litton Road. As you get past that, up to K32 and on past there, there's probably driven very little litter pickup. But we said, well, what is, what have you been doing? What, you know, what are you collecting out for your teams out there? You know, you have four people that are assigned to the litter control team, so, you know, when are they going out, how far they going out, where they going out, you know? We understand that I can all be in Edwardsville proper, but, you know, what's the data? The answer is, they don't have the data, they don't know, they don't know when the team goes out, they don't know how much they collected, they don't know where they collected it from. Pretty disappointing.
And inaccurate.
Probably, yeah.
I mean, how do you not know where you're standing?
I, yeah.
I don't even interrupt.
No, you're fine.
But you know where your personnel is working.
But you know where your personnel is working.
So frustrating. We have said to them, I have said to them very clearly, that, you know, we expect that they keep that data, especially as it relates to our city, and that at the end of this first quarter of 2018, we will expect them to provide a report to this body. And I thank you coming for you and telling you what they have or haven't done. I also got with KDOT, because as we know, this is KDOT's right of way, right? And you don't go work with KDOT's right of way without KDOT's responsibility. They actually keep very detailed records of their work crews, not surprising. And, you know, what they said is that in the Edwardsville sub-area, which I'm not sure exactly what all that includes, but that's going to include Highway 74, 35, generally speaking, the area that would make up our city limits, they generally are out two times a week doing pickup. Now, I think it's, you know, right to say that when they call pickup, they're picking up the tires and the bumpers and the big items. They don't tend to go do small litter pickup. That's not what they say twice a week, they're not doing that. And of course, there's weeks where they probably have more or less. I would also note that the bridge, because that is, you know, that area, we see the bridge over the river, that technically is not part of Area 3. It comes out of Johnson County. So it's actually the Johnson County KDOT crews that clean all the way to the north side of the bridge. The group here helps, but it is not their responsible area, so that actually comes out of a different group. They do have, once or twice every year, they do basically, they call it deep clean across the right of ways for KDOT Area 3, which also includes parts, sub-area of Leavenworth County. So they're doing pretty much every part of Wyandotte County that they include, parts of Leavenworth County, they also work with Johnson County. So as you can imagine, there's no way they get every mile of roadway in that cleanup. They're going to hit the hot spots, and they're more than, you know, if we tell them we have problems, they're happy to go out there and try to pick up those things, and they always have responded when we've called them. They did note that in their fiscal year, which is the July to June fiscal year all over the state, they spent in the 2017 fiscal year, which just, which ended basically June or July 1 of 2017, so they spent $50,500, and 83% of that was spent on 435. And to date, they've spent not quite $30,000 on the same area. So they are, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, yeah, definitely. What do those boys make?
Yeah. So, say what?
Say, what do those guys make?
I don't.
Because the $50,000, I don't thought we did it.
Well, my guess is, that is inclusive of, you know, they, we, equipment, and, you know, they have a pretty extensive workforces, but dollars that have been spent on litter control, not necessarily just people. But I think it is important to know that they are keeping track of what they're doing out there, and that they are doing work out there. Again, I spoke to Mr. Kane, who's the area engineer. Their focus is on the big items, the items that, you know, your car hits and traction thing, more so than what I've called litter. So, you know, the blown tires, the pieces off a car, the pallets that fall off the trucks, things like that. That's their primary focus, you know, that primary safety thing. So what are some of our solutions that we could look to? Kansas, the KDOT has the Adopt a Highway program. Those are done through volunteer groups or through groups. Sometimes it's a business, and they have, you know, they adopt the highway as part of the business, and their employees who are paid will go out and clean the right of way. You have to register with KDOT. You know, they have certain rules and regulations about where you can be on the roadway. They provide safety vests, they provide gloves, they provide bags, so they have a program there. And anybody else that works at KDOT right of way would effectively have to follow the same rules, right? Even if you're not adopt the highway, if you're working in the right of way, they have some regulations. The second thing that we've talked about is community service. Currently today, our court doesn't use community service. Understand that community service means a person got sentenced, and they don't necessarily have the financial, they don't have the money to pay their fine, and the court offers to them, they don't have to take it, offers to them community service, they pay them at some rate of pay, you know, 10 bucks an hour, or whatever it is, until they work off their fine. They have to go to certain places to do that, or, you know, whatever host sites there may be. Some of the bigger communities use, the Kansas Crime Commission, they have a whole program where the person goes, and if you got to go to Missouri, you pay a fee, and then they assign you to particular work areas. We could be a host site for other courts. I will tell you, just some of my discussions with some cities is they're not really using community service for whatever reasons. Some of that is just paperwork and things that the court has to do, and they don't find that as valuable to them. I mean, each city's different. We, you know, if we did community service, what we would do is we would set up days, say like the 2nd and 4th Friday of every month, for four hours, and then have community service workers report to some place and pick up trash for that period of time, and we would sign off on that, and then we'd go back to court. I could say there'd have to be, that's a, it's going to take a little bit of time, they're going to get, the court has to do it, the judge has to, you know, have a system, make sure we're following up with, you know, that somebody did their community service, how long do they have? I mean, I have spoken to the judge, I mean, he's not opposed to implementing it, just, you know, it takes some pieces in there. The challenge to community services, we all know, is, I mean, you're dependent upon the participants and whether you have participants. So, I mean, you could have a community service day, and you could have one person show up or 10 people show up. So it's hard to have consistency in service. So, I mean, if you think every Friday you're going to have four people there, you may have none, you may have some. So, you know, actually, it's one of the issues of community services we have to look at. Generally, we are talking about people that are, you know, they come to the municipal courts, so they, you know, it's a traffic citation, might be a DUI, something like that, and they want to do this in lieu of going to jail or paying a fine. Some of those things, you know, are set by statute. They not have to go to serve 24 hours in jail because of laws, so they have to. I'm not a statutory guy, unless required in courts, but there are certain requirements for different types of cases. Enforcement, and there's really two options here. One, we need to remember that property owners are supposed to take care of the right of way for their house. So if they're just letting the trash pile up out there and things like that, that's something we can address with code. We don't have a lot of that. I mean, mostly it's something that's blown out there, and it's there. I mean, I can't think of playgrounds that you drive by, and there's just a ton of trash out there, and the property owners just take care of it. It's probably more likely in areas where it's undeveloped, so you've got pastures and things like that, and over time the wind has blown, trash cans, et cetera. But the other one is what we're referring to as targeted enforcement, which is interesting because both Deppen Ball, and Deppen Ball first said it, so maybe there needs to be enforcement of loose loads on the highway. Good idea. Someone at KDOT said that, so we reached out with the Kansas Highway Patrol and said, you know, would you be willing to work with us? Because we think about 435, now, all of that is in our jurisdiction, and we don't typically work highways, that's not what we typically do at our police department, so much of the staffing and things like that. I mean, we're more concerned about what's going on inside the community than, you know, speeding on the freeway. But we could do some targeted enforcement there, certainly supported by the Highway Patrol. So if those trucks are going down the road, and there's loose trash coming out of them, that's a violation of our ordinances and state regulations, we can enforce that. Now, we would probably do that on a targeted basis, not something we do out there every day, but that might, you know, help alleviate some of that floating out of trucks and getting the, remember you can't pile up trucks, there's other vehicles. There's other vehicles out there that got pallets tied on the back of a trailer that falls off, or, you know, stacks of tires. So we think that's one. And the other two kind of go together, and that would be, do we hire labor? So whether it's a contract or temporary, well, really, it's, you know, do you do a contract service? And we had reached out to Deppen Ball to say, have you already got the van and a system and the porta potty? Because, you know, what do you do when you've got people out there, you know, they got to be able to get the back, how do you get them out there, things like that? But we don't have a van, and we can transport eight people out to someplace. So you got to have someplace from the park or be available, and things like that. So are there services out there that we could hire and say, hey, we want eight hours of litter control a month, or 12 hours of litter control a month? What would your charges? And, you know, we simply turn it over to them as a contractual service, right? You go out and pick it up, we pay you for you to do that. And then the other thing is more, do we use temporary labor either through a labor agency or through our own selves, right? And, I mean, the benefit of a labor agency is we don't have to do the payroll, the background checks, the, you know, workers' comp, you know, somebody gets injured or hurt, if they're a volunteer or employee, they're going to get covered under workers' comp, they're going to get covered under, you know, our insurance. So again, you don't say no to do something because of liability, but you definitely take it into consideration. So if you can shift some of that through a temporary agency, that's there. We've just got some very preliminary information, you know, the guy you pay 10 bucks an hour through a temporary agency is going to cost about $17.50 an hour. Is that a good fair price? I don't know, we just, again, I got that number as a day. What's it cost us to have a $10, you know, if I pay somebody $10 an hour, the city costs more than 10 bucks an hour, so. Those are things that we're looking at. Some of those, obviously, we can move forward a bit quicker, and others are slower, but, you know, we can start using temporary labor or using those kind of things firmly quickly, and then just target the areas we want to do. Do we want to get out on the interstate? You know, do we want to, there's a risk, obviously, of people working out on the interstate, but there's a risk of our, some of our local roads, where we've got hills and very mineral properties. Do I need to do something? Is it all by itself?
Did you eat anything?
No. I can if you want. Well, I was just about to, yeah, maybe it was just that this time out, or did the ball go out?
The ball went out.
Okay. So I was about to, to the end anyway. So, so we have those solutions. I mean, again, what are the things we have to consider? I mean, what's the cost? What are our liabilities? You know, what's our staffing? You know, how do we, you know, manage them? Somebody, you know, you can't just call somebody and say, we'll pick up trash. Obviously, we manage that through, through our staff and put them out there. It isn't something we think we could use our new code, I say new, we have code enforcement, also have a new person starting today, don't believe she's here, no, we'll introduce her in the near future. You know, that's something we, you know, maybe could do through that process. And that, you know, those are kind of the pieces. I wanted to, I know we had some discussion last time, so wanted to bring it back up and make sure we're on the right track. And I don't think there's one single method that's going to address it, and it's an ongoing problem, I think we all realize. Depending on our proximity to the landfill, depending on our proximity to interstate highways, it, you know, a lot of truck traffic, we have 10 to 12% of our traffic is traffic. Typical city, you might be looking at 35%. So you have a lot more of that. Again, we, you know, we reached out to some other communities. Daniel was still, they were, Shawnee, they, you know, they use temporary labor, that's where that idea came from, so they, they had a person within a, I think Public Works Traffic or whatever, you know, and they would, on a set schedule, they, you know, temporary labor was out to some, mainly Shawnee official parkway, I think, which at one point was KDOT, but then the city took responsibility to it. For us, K32 and 435 are, you know, obviously KDOT-controlled highways. So again, anything we do there, we have to work with them. I don't see any problems with that. Again, area engineers very helpful in working with us. That's kind of just the overview, and then wanted to see if there was directions that I were missing. Clearly, it's a problem. We certainly believe that our solid waste company needs to do a better job. I think, you know, KDOT is doing the job within their bounds that they can do. Again, they certainly, you know, if I say, hey, can we focus on this particular area? We've got a lot of problems, I think they'll certainly come out and can address that and work with us to do that. It's really the more ongoing process, how you, you know, how you keep it clean.
It's not a stretch, but I think that Deppen Ball is the source of most of it. At least 50, 70% of it is from their vehicles because they're the one putting the most miles on the road. So I, I said you reached out to them to make sense? We really don't keep track of those things. We sound like we do much of it here, at least not.
They're not out there every day.
Well, I don't think every day is necessary, but.
I'm not sure they're out there once a week. I saw that, after I called them, I noticed that the K30, the Wood End, the Wood End intersection got cleaned up shortly after I called them. And I noticed today that they were out working just north of the river around the Holiday Drive, that's the part where I seen, started weeks minimum.
When I called them, just to let them know that they have a lot of trash, just as a citizen calling, they said, well, do you know that it was the Deppen Ball truck? Or could it have been any of the other contractor trucks that we had come through there? So they were really quick to push it off onto someone else. I am totally against giving them any more business of hiring them to come into our city and pick up trash when they've already lied to us. I don't think that we should give them more money.
I agree.
They sat right here and, and sold us, when they wanted our contract for our trash pickup, that they were going to provide a service for us, and we know that it was not binding and contractual binding, but that man stood right there and told us what they would do, and that we know now that that's not true. So.
I certainly wasn't right. We had contacted them maybe four or five months ago and said, hey, you know, this is a problem, is it a matter of, you know, and really, I was looking at more from internal, like on our city streets, if we, if we wanted to have a program, such they already have some, I would not call them today for that purpose. I totally agree.
Yeah, we have two different problems. It's our highway, obviously, and then we have our internal trash. And you're right, there's places that, they don't, the, where there's not, most people, I think, pick, try to pick up the trash. But a lot of people know that they're going to rely on their neighbor that picks up the trash all the time. And that, so they don't go and worry about it. Because Joe next door goes down our street and picks up all the trash. Well, that's not right either, because you're always putting it on Joe. So I don't know if, I mean, I'm all for like, like, community pickup, or how we get our, you know, and I always, I hate to always refer back to when I was a policeman at KCK, but there were community groups.
Right.
You know, and maybe there's a community group that could reach out. I mean, I don't know, we don't have them, maybe Kiwanis.
Right.
Might be able to help us out.
I'm going to interject on the Kiwanis, they used to do that, but they, they discontinued it.
Yeah.
A lot of it had to do with relying on somebody to show up.
Boy Scouts?
Yeah.
Oh, hey. Well, but you know, certain groups that would be willing to come up and help out, and that we, and maybe it's not a paid, maybe we're able to make a financial contribution to their group, their Cub Scout group, or their Kiwanis or whatever. I don't know how that'd work, but just, you know, the 435 is, is one issue, and for sure.
Right.
And, and we all, we, it's Deppen Ball, I mean, we are not, we're all, we know what it is. And the, what happens is we get mowed when it's close to race weekend. They come up and mow, because it's the only time they come out and mow, is twice a year when it's the few days before race weekend. And then they mow over 1,000 pieces and turn them into 10 million pieces. And that's what happens.
Well, and, and, you know, KDOT, like most departments of transportation, I would say even actually, right? You used to see them four to six times a year on their right of way, and now two or three is about the average, you know? They're trying to use more vegetation controls and sprays and growth retardants and things, which, you know, works, but then, that puts you out there, you know, a lot of money. KDOT sold a lot. A lot of money, K-8 sold a lot of its equipment. I mean, but they don't even keep backups at all in their places. You know, they either share one or rent one, but it's a package or so. I think it's a series of issues that's there, but I do think the volunteer groups and when I, when I talked about that, you know, with K-8, you know, it's finding volunteer groups. We've had one, if you look on, on, and that may have been Kiwanis, but I thought it was a church.
Well, the one on, the one on Edgersville Drive, there were some churches involved, but I don't know that, I mean, I did the science in it, like actually back in the 90s, and I don't know that anybody ever did it.
Yeah, there's a assembly of God sign up kind of the top of it.
It's a part of that.
Right, but I didn't know, I, I mean, I was a member of the Kiwanis and I used to do that. I used to be out there on their, on that once, once a month, you know, volunteering to, to help the Kiwanis do it. My feeling is, is it looks to me like the most reliable would be the contract find it, you know, if we can't find a, if we can't find a volunteer group, it sounds to me like those would be the less liability to the city and less supervision by.
Right.
And, and then to rely on community service when somebody may not take that option to do it, then we're still out. At least with that option of going with the contract, at least we can guarantee that we got somebody out there.
And that, that's the plus of, whether it's contract, hiring temporary labor, hiring, you know, I would, I would, to hire, to hire part-time, you know, if I go out and just, you know, I mean, I, do I go hire four people at 10 bucks an hour for eight hours a month? Sure, we can do that. The downside of all that is they sprain their ankle, get hurt, whatever. It bends on our nickel versus by using agency, I'm still getting labor. I mean, this isn't a high, you know, high skilled job.
To me, that, that would be the most reliable.
Certainly, because you can schedule it and you know, you know that on this day I'm going to have these people here and we have a lot more than that. But I, but I do think, you know, when we talk about the adoption highway program, I mean, you can use those same parameters internally on local services, right? Again, you know, they're, they're going to have to, you know, we provide bags, gloves, vests, you know, they all have to sign off on a liability waiver and, you know, it's an unliability and I, we all know that that, you know, it's good to a point, not going to prevent you from getting sued, but again, you do everything you can to reduce risk. But anybody can walk outside of the road, trip, break their ankle, that's it, life. But, you know, we, we do everything. So I think it's a combination. I don't think there's one item that fixes this problem. And I think we also need to focus some of our funding on things like our entry science, right? I, I think, you know, Councilman Stites said it, whether he said it to me or said it publicly, but it's a good point either way, you know? How do you want people to see the city? And then we talk about this, you know, so when they come into our community, one of the first places they see is those three points, right? K-32, either side, and 110th Street to the north. That's where, outside of the industrial park, that's where most people see our community for the first time. And so I think there's even things we can do with landscaping, you know, lighting potentially, just different things that we can do. So we come to our community and want people to feel, feel good about the community. I mean, I'd have to say Bonner Springs has done a pretty, you know, when you look at their entry places and things, they've done a good job. Part of that is they have the, you know, Bonner Beautiful Committee, so they have a committed group of people that are out there doing that and that's nice to have. So I, I think it's more, I mean, litter control is part of it, but it's really more of a, how do we address our public's image out there? And we have to, you know, for us to say, we got to invest in ourselves, we expect other people to do the best. We, we do a lot, we do do a lot of that, and we have to continue.
One thing I would really like to see is reaching out within our school system. We've got science clubs and different committees within high schools where students are trying to get their volunteer hours in for college applications and for, some even schools have it a requirement is graduate, for graduation, to get so many volunteer hours. Right now, our Edgersville kids obviously go to Bonner High School, but they don't really have a way to get that to our own community. And so I think what a great opportunity for them to build into their own hometown and a free resource to us, that us.
And we have had a couple of Bonner, you know, Bonner High School students from Edgersville in the past do projects. We did some stuff at the boat ramp, some park types of, of things. Of course, we had the scouts do the, the, the seating thing. So yes, I think there is a resource there that we could tap it more effectively than we have.
It seems to me we kind of have two different, we've got the local streets and then I'm, I'm somewhat concerned about 435 and somewhat about 32. The liability on those two, those two streets are much higher than the liability on the internal streets. And so maybe look at, at maybe a hired labor force for those, those areas with a high degree of liability.
Right.
And on the internal, we could look more on a volunteer basis. I, I just see that the two.
Especially for the kind of extreme high liability areas.
And I will say, unfortunately, some of our local streets, because of topography of them and the narrowness of them creates, you know, certain risks too. But again, all those things can be not eliminated, but right, that's why you use signage, that's why you, you know, try to create some speed, you know, barricades, visual, et cetera. So when people, whether it's our people after working, you know, just normal duties, right, it's, it's the same issues.
Well, all of our vehicles have flash.
Yes, sir.
So make sure I understand, we have a judge that says he's willing to do community service, issue community service.
Right.
Okay? That's good.
Right.
We have criminals that could be issued community service in our city.
Yeah, and I understand that they have to be, they have to be sentenced.
Sure.
First, and then that, that is an option in lieu of paying fines or going to jail.
But, but up until now, that has not been an option.
That has not been an option, right.
When I was involved in this program, there was a list of people that would say, we will be there Saturday morning. It happened to be Saturday morning is when, hours that we used to have. And that list could be anywhere from five to 20 people.
Right.
I didn't care if all 20 showed up. If five showed up, that was more trash than got picked up the day before. We had no one picking up trash.
Absolutely. I'm just saying.
I'm in favor of the community service option where we already have paid staff, not to put a more, just spend more money on getting trash picked up in our city.
No, I.
The, it's kind of interesting. I think about what Councilman Adams said about the highways. It's true, you think about it because of the speed, but if you have people that are, let's say not the median, not in the middle two, but there is a lot of trash 100 feet off the road, you know, all the way up to that fence, where it puts them probably at a whole lot less risk than being on a narrow 102nd Street where a car goes by and, and there's not shoulders. So it's kind of interesting, you know, at the, so, but I think we do have two distinct different trash problems. The highway, I would like for the people that are responsible for our highways to take care of our highways is how I think that it should happen. And the people that promised us that they would do that when they were wanting our contract, would we hold their feet to the fire? If I'm not mistaken, wasn't there something, and I can't remember, that would come before us in the year of 2018, which is this year?
April.
April, then what did they want?
Organize commercial collection.
Really? How interesting. So.
We've made them aware of that, in particular, in time frame.
Okay, so I, I.
I understand.
It's just depends away. So maybe we kind of let that thing roll, let that play out and we look into all the other possibilities. Let the, if we, the judge see, see where that goes. Let people start seeing if community service is an option. And if we have an overwhelming amount and people say, heck yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather spend five hours working versus a $50 fine.
Right.
And, and we have a whole lot of those folks, then, then we know where our numbers are. Instead of right now, we're just guessing. We don't know. We don't have any, how many people take part in that?
I, I think part of it, along that, right, it's from, again, I think it's more than, I think take multiple ways to address it, is we would probably start off with people from our court.
Sure.
But it certainly can be, you know, do we become, as I said, a host site, but then it's, how, you know, then it, if you get, and I don't think we'll ever be there, right? You know, then do you use something like the Crime Commission where people go there and have to pay a fee and then they get a sign? But they're generally sending people to, you know, harvesters and, you know, of, of those caliber. You know, I don't know what Bonner Springs does if they use community service. I think they do some, but they, their option is long-term, which is certainly your organization where they use so bad as well. And not everybody quite honestly comes in our court might be physically capable to do.
Then you don't, then you don't take partake in that program. You, you say, I'd rather pay the fine and you go on. I'm not saying this is going to, everybody's going to jump onto it, but we need to, we also need to have some data to base where we go forward on this. I know that I had KCK. I asked their community policing officers, I called their, their place, and they came out and cleaned from I-70 on 98th Street to State Avenue five times in the last two years with a group on Saturday. So I, I mean, there is a, a number of people that partake. That's a bigger city, I understand, and we might not, our numbers may show that we, we don't have enough. You go, man, we're getting two people take, want to take community service, then we obviously know we're not going to go that route with two people.
Can you refresh my memory? Have you talked to Lansing and Levnor?
We have talked to them and I, I might, about, we're, we talked to the Sheriff's Office as well, Wyandotte County Sheriff's Office. Typically, they will only, like, it's a large project, right? So we did use Lansing State Jail, but I don't know that they're doing anybody anymore. I didn't hear what you said. We used it to do cemetery cleanup, the old cemetery. I talked to the sheriff, Don Ash, you know, they've done only a couple of things during his time as sheriff, and that being using jail inmates, because that obviously then requires whatever that agency is to provide. You know, they got it made, that's a different, you know, different standard.
But that's our county. We are Wyandotte County.
Right, I agree.
And I think that it, and that we haven't went to that option or looked at down that road or that path. So I think if we ask and engage them and say, this is what we would like to do. Now, who did you say that they only would do it if it's a large project? Heck, I don't care who comes and picks up. It doesn't have to be Deffinball that picks up the trash from on 435. That's a pretty large project, in my opinion.
Well, when I spoke to Don Ash, when they'd done, when I said, you know, they'd done stuff around Wyandotte County Lake, like Lake 11, where, where they took people out of the jail and working, and I think, you know, I'm sorry, you know, a lot of those people are pre-sentenced and, and they're not, they can't use them, they have to use sentenced people and, you know, I'm sure there's a whole series of things.
I'm not, I'm not saying that. We, I mean, we would only want the folks that are eligible with that, we're not going to take the people out.
But he's, I think his point was just at, at his time as sheriff, they've done some, but they, they generally aren't, I mean, I was in a city where we have state jail and every Friday they get on parks work. When I was in Osawatomie, every day, we, we had a full-time person who was the cemetery maintenance person, public clerk. He got certified, every day he went to that Osawatomie State Jail or whatever it is, picked up four people and all they did was do the cemetery. I mean, and we had great cemeteries, of course, over time that went away and, you know, and of course the, you know, facility downers had its issues and things. So, yeah, there's, there's, and I'm just saying, Don Ash indicated, you know, they've done like Lake 11 or Wyandotte, where they could take a group of 10 or 15 people for three or four days versus all come out every two weeks and do something, you know?
And that's fine. I don't, and what I'm saying is that they wouldn't know Edwardsville needs that help because we've never asked. That's all I'm saying. So maybe we can start that and maybe they say, you know what, once a year, you know, we'll do your 435 or. And I think, I think it sure is easier to keep your car clean when you wash it, you know, once a month versus once a year. So if, so if we get it done and we can stay on top of it, you know, and maybe, maybe we're, it makes it easier then for Deffinball and those people to keep up that, a minimal amount that's tossed out, you know, in a weekly or a monthly basis. If we could start fresh, you know, that makes it easier.
Get the fence lines or system.
Exactly. And maybe we need to borrow it.
I still think that, that the hired one is going to get you there quicker than trying to set up a, a community service program through our court system and then figure out how we're going to monitor those people, where in a hired situation, we don't have to send an officer out there to monitor.
Well, and you're right.
We just have to pay for it.
It's time, I mean, you're right. I mean, I, I mean, we could probably go hire four people by the end of the week.
Yeah.
To attempt service and say, we want you here Monday and start picking up trash. It's going to take a little longer to have implemented in the court and have people that are eligible, I mean, you might be 90 days. So that's why I say, I don't think there's a, I don't think of a one solution.
It doesn't have to be either or.
Right.
So we can start with that pain, at least get some of that trash.
And we start building our numbers.
Yeah.
Not interrupting.
Yeah, and, and, and build the program and do what we need to legislatively to make that work and so forth. And to follow up on, on Councilman KR's comment with the school, what do we have to do to get on their list of approved community service venues?
I, I will have to check. I don't know if I'll call to the super.
You know, and, you know, if it could be an option, like, okay, you can do these 12 things, now there's 13 things.
I, and I know it's kind of, I can ask, it'd be the mayor's decision. We, the, the Boy Scout's father, I think, has an input and a suggestion on this that might help us with that, because he's raising his hand. So I don't know if you'll, if you'll take that or not, I don't know. If he, if, I, I'm just, I don't know if you saw him or not.
Typically, we don't do this.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm going to go ahead and allow you to make a comment.
Okay.
It's kind of great, but hip tradition.
Yeah, come, at least give us name and address.
Brian Barraglia with the 468 Lake Street. I used to be a scoutmaster and I've worked with several different volunteer organizations. What Chuck Styles? Styles, I'm sorry. Stated earlier about getting a stipend for volunteer groups to come out and clean up. I know there's a bunch of them that would jump on that. I'm not an active leader in this area, otherwise I would tell my unit, hey, talk to them. I know there's a lot of volunteers, even at the high schools, the churches, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Ventura and crews. There's a lot of volunteer organizations that are wanting funding.
If I supply you with an email address after the meeting's over, would you be able to send some of those groups to me or contact our staff and?
Send, send it to Mike, yeah.
Unfortunately, I don't know them personally because I.
Or do any, just any ideas that you think have done that type of stuff in the past that we could reach out to and say, we got your number, hoping that you might be able to help us out? Are you ready?
The reason why is I work with units in Johnson County, so I don't know the Edwardsville community units. I just know scouting units. But I will try to find, pick up some contacts of people here in the Edwardsville and Bonner Springs community and send them your guys' way.
Thank you, Edwardsville Mike. Thank you for your city manager and we can get started on it. Thank you very much for your comment.
I think you know some of the, you don't speak.
Sure.
I do know some scout people, unfortunately, we had some, so we'll be chat.
Okay, we're ready to move on to advisory work.
I'm going to keep it simple. I, I, I get picked up at Gore 15 a.m., which, as all of y'all know, I love mornings, Saturday morning to go to the airport and I will be out of the country and go out of all of my generally annual mission trip down there. So I will be out of the office next week, relatively unavailable, inaccessible. But we have great staff and a trusted assistant that I'm sure will, will keep everything running smoothly.
Well, he's done it when you've been gone before. He's run it, but when you've been gone before.
You know, everybody's done, the only complaint I ever get every time I leave town is seems that's when we have the big snowstorm.
Oh, wow.
Which is okay by me, but generally, I, Public Works and others always tell me, I don't think I can back. But honestly, I will be out of the country during that time. I will have some access, but obviously more limited. I won't have telephone access except as an emergency. So other than that, the good thing is we're in that third week, so we have a. so we have a broader cycle there, so we'll have that in between.
We'll have that.
I think, yes. It's, it's a great trip, I enjoy it, fun is, you know, marginal, but it's well worth it and I always find it to be a mental refresher, I come back, well, somewhat well-rested, not physically, but mentally, so.
Chief Witter.
Yes, as you alluded to earlier today, part of the two thousand and eight budget process, we created a deputy chief position in the fire department. Mr. Burr had been doing a lot of those tasks for the last two years, almost three years since we've been here, since three years now. I approached the city manager to finish the process last year to recreate his position, bring him in. So Mr. Burr is now the deputy fire chief, he's also the EMS supervisor, so in our correlation organizational charter, there's me, then there's Mr. Burr, then there's the captains. So the captains will be gradually, it's kind of brought the organization more of a straight stream of minds, possibly, and also to allow some growth besides some more pay for Mr. Burr during the time that we're doing, but it does allow an extra layer of administrative coverage, I'm very doubtful that the captains have got, the guys is on there. The auto pulse that was purchased was donations from the Speedway and Waste Management, it's here, the crews are trained on it, it is on the bumper, so it is out there with the equipment if you guys ever decide to come down and wanna look at it at any given time, please just let us know, we'll go over and show you anything we have next door. The burn ban, I pulled this morning with a little bit of moisture we had, because we've got thirty or forty people that were hauling every day, wanting to know if I was gonna let burning go back, I figured there's enough white stuff and enough moisture, it's on the top content of the ground if it fall, that it's okay. However, we've all been advised, the National Weather Service has advised in extreme winter spring, we're probably gonna go into a lot of red flag hazard days, we're down about nine inches precipitation for the year, the hard freezes and the duration of the frozen tundra and ground has dried the moisture content out, so I anticipate that once the moisture content from the top layer of the soil is gone, I'll probably reinforce the burn ban. We did have some people that violated the burn ban, didn't have burn permits, and they were cited and are going through the court process, but we have allowed it right now because we've got some moisture back in there to, to go.
They may want community service.
I'll be more glad to stand on somebody's front desk, I'm gonna write you six, we've got a good call here.
We're letting murder trash.
I got a question regarding that, so do they ever do, I see it in, I've seen it in other far out state areas in western Kansas.
Not western, no.
Western Kansas. Where they actually burn the medians and they burn the, uh, uh.
Yes. Yes, the, 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 resources allows to be done in the Flint Hills predominantly for not so much for vegetation control, but it's because of the agricultural base of the party operations or the numbers, heads of cattle that are out there. The problem is, is the rest of the state of Kansas can burn openly freely and nobody cares. If you live in Wichita, Topeka, or Johnson and Wyandotte Counties, all burning has to be done through K-DIM, K-DIM very stringently does not want anything burnt at all. In fact, when they're burning in the Flint Hills, they email us and say, you can't allow any type of burning because you're gonna be under air advisory the whole time. That is the one problem gets into it, because the Flint Hills, I mean, literally you gotta go through with new signage posted up there, and then if you've got good days that you're burning, you've got, you know, acres that you're talking about burning, and with them, they've got times where they're slowed down to zero, zero miles per hour and traffic are all sent on the shore because of the smoke conditions of burning several thousand acres. It's one of those situations that, you know, is not gonna be allowed if you're up around close to the metro area at all.
We have used some burns locally with, you know, our.
Right, yeah, right.
Thank you. Public work.
I'm just briefly, I think Mike mentioned, some of you may know that the community service officer resigned in early December, so she left about two months, and we are looking to hire a new community service officer, she actually started today, she comes with eleven years of public, public, local government experience, she's worked ten years at the public works department in the city of Levnor, then a year for the UG, so, I'm, I'm on the public issues, I just don't know.
Turn it.
Claudia Larkin, she will be here probably the next meeting, I'll have her come.
Did you do an exit interview with the person who wasn't only here for?
Um, I, I asked her a few questions, I did, we don't formally have exit interviews, but I actually did that myself.
Okay, I would just, I mean, not that, but it would just be good to know, why, I'm turning.
Um, she wasn't looking for a job, someone approached her for a job, frankly, she was a young professional, I mean, she had worked for the city for three years.
Part-time.
Part-time, in the parks department, she just graduated college, she said she wanted a job, she said she knew what the job was, don't really think she really had a, no good understanding until she got in and learned that it was part of eighty-five percent administrative, just really wasn't her capacity, she was, you made an offer from another organization, which was outdoors, which is of capacity, so she resigned, so, you know, you know, hope that that's for her, I think we've got a good CSO, so, excited.
Thank you. Chuck, let's start with you.
Did, I think I missed Mr. Burr.
Or, did he answer for you?
He did.
Sure, buddy.
You're the, you're the grant writer of that.
Boom. I appreciate the work that you did on, on the trash stuff, you know what, I mean, we've all got a lot of ideas, we've got, the ultimate goal is we want our city to look nicer, be cleaner, and be more inviting to, to folks and, and to the folks that live here. We don't, it's not all about what our image of people that are coming into our city, you know what, we need to be ourselves, be proud of what we've got and, and continue, so that's, I appreciate that work, I know we'll end up getting somewhere on that and whatever, whatever it takes to make it work. It was interesting that you brought up exit interview, I, I had been thinking about that too. We don't, right now, do any form when people leave of a formal exit interview.
Have not, no.
Is that something that we should start looking into maybe, to get some feedback on, on our employees that do leave? We're, you know, we're small enough that it, I don't think it should be too tough, but I, I would like to maybe see what that would look like.
Okay, I mean, it's, you know, it's not an uncommon practice.
Right, right. I think it's beneficial to us to know why we're, why, why we lose anyone from good, bad, or whatever, at least we know.
We're pretty, I mean, thankfully, we're pretty, pretty stable overall, I mean, there's always a couple misses, I mean, you know, we've been, I mean, pretty stable, police department, I mean, been one or two in a year, generally, I, something, you know, I wanna.
Which is pretty high.
I wanna go to the bigger city and go somewhere, sometimes it's been, quite honestly, their, their actions have led them to do something else, retirements, we, you know, four or five.
Looking for a report now, just that we.
So I understand, it's a good thing, but I mean, we, we do have a pretty stable overall work with the police department.
I agree with Chuck on your trash report, I guess, or very literary, thank you for all of our work, it's been a conversation we've had for a long time, what to do, how to do, we know what we need to do and make the city look a lot better, especially at the entrances.
Right.
I'd like to congratulate and thank the mayor's appointments and reappointments to the cemetery parks and planning boards, because that is, that's so integral to this community, is the volunteers that, that do come and go to the meetings and report their ideas and collaborate, so. And last, I'd like to thank Michael for coming, very impressive when you came up here and met the mayor and myself, your manners and your respect, very, very admirable, keep that up, and the best of luck to you, if that equals that. Thank you.
She stole all my comments. It depends upon where you sit up here, you know, I wanted to thank the commission volunteers also, I've served in those before and, and they're kind of a thankless position, but they're definitely needed in the city and to really thank you for that service. And also the Boy Scout, I was, I had that written down here to thank you and don't be a stranger to come around some more and watch.
Okay, I just wanted to take a minute and appreciate both the fire and the police chief, in the last two meetings, both have talked about grants that they have pursued to save our city money and to equip both departments, new things that we didn't have before, and taxpayers really appreciate that, and so do I, so I just wanted to take some time to mention that, I know it's a lot of extra work on both of you.
The sadness of going last as you get to say ditto on all the previous, I've had a couple interesting conversations over the last couple of weeks, someone, one of our citizens came up to me and said, how come our streets are always better than all of the neighboring communities in bad weather? I said, because we have good people. And it's been that way for years, ever since I've lived here, our streets are better than all of the communities around us, and I really want to recognize that, and I've had a couple opportunities to brag on our chiefs, and we feel, I feel very blessed to have chiefs that are so highly qualified and are, that are known regionally and nationally on staff that really means a lot, and our citizens need to know that, that they can brag about the leadership they have in town, so, thank you very much for your leadership and your skills, I appreciate it.
Like I said, Tony, I want to congratulate you, I've already, I've already thanked the chief and congratulated him on promoting you and really appreciate your service here, you've been a wonderful asset.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank to everybody in, in our service and our staff, both chiefs, family, great job. So with that, we are adjourned.